So. Everything is nice, white and clean, right?
Yep.
All right, good.
Yes. What did you think of today's article? Did you see it? I sent it to you.
Yeah, I spoke to Commissioner Oddman. It was pretty much like a no article at all. It was like, like, is there like a part two coming? Is like a, you know? You know, it was kind of left like I was telling Commissioner Oddman, no good deed goes unpunched, you know?
Exactly.
What can I say?
You say no good deed goes unpunched?
Yes.
Yeah.
Punished?
Unpunished. Talking about the tree overlay.
Uh, no, I was, I was seeing if you had your own spin on it and that no good deed goes unpunched.
Oh, no, unpunished.
Oh, I thought it was like an Anna spin on a phrase.
No, hopefully, hopefully, nobody comes to punch us, God forbid, you know?
Finger crossed.
Yeah, right?
The night is still young, right?
Right.
You know, I bought some really good tangerines and I bought some really sour nasty ones.
Really? I have a whole bowl of cuties and I'm gonna eat them the entire time from really.
I love sweet tangerines. Like, I love them.
But the bitter ones, when you're not expecting it, can like just, oh, it's just not good.
I don't like anything bitter at all.
Hello.
Hello.
Hey, Lyle, how are you?
I'm doing well.
Good.
Hello, how are you?
I'm doing well.
It's such a nice night. There's so many mangoes on the mango tree this year for my neighbor. Are we all ready?
Hi, Mayor, how are you feeling?
Um, I'm, I'm here. I'm here.
Thank you.
And let's see. Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to our third strategic planning session. Today is April fifteenth and it's five thirty. Call the roll, please.
Mayor James.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Salvino. I see you.
Here, I'm here, sorry.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lawillen.
Here.
Commissioner Oddman.
Here.
City Manager Garcia.
Here.
City Attorney Ansbrum.
My, my backdrop, but different, my backdrop, but I'm here.
Okay, um, I guess I'll turn it over to you, Lyle.
Anna, do you have any comments before we start?
No, sir. We're turning it over to you and you lead us through this. We're ready to rock and roll and very excited that, that we as a team are taking this giant step forward in the strategic planning session.
The document tonight is, uh, we're gonna start with, uh, section eleven, looks like this, and it's updated. And the first thing we're gonna do is review the action outlines, the items that you identified as initial priorities. I met with staff, we identified who's gonna do what, when, and what are the deliverables? Tonight is reviewing these. We can change them. These are working documents. If it's not meeting your guidelines, your expectations, your issues, your outcomes, tonight's the night to do that. So the first part is a little tedious, but it's going through your initial priorities. All of the items were either put on Anna's list or you got a majority vote of three. So that's how they got on the list. From here, we will then take the policy and identify top and high priority. And then we'll go to the management and do the same. Uh, that is the first part of our meeting tonight. Any questions before we start? You guys ready to go? Thumbs up will be helpful to me if you're ready to move on, you're good. Uh, I cannot see the mayor, but I can see the rest of you, so.
What page are you on, Lyle? Or what part are you on? You said section twelve?
Eleven.
Okay, yeah, go.
It looks like that. So it's an action out agenda. I would like you to flip to page thirteen. And thirteen should look like this. Hopefully, that's clear enough on your end. We spent a whole day with the management group putting, uh, specifics to the things that you identified. So if you go to page thirteen, the first one under the goal of a financially sound and responsible city, providing services valued by the community. The activities are, uh, in May, define the scope, and the first one is Geo Bond twenty twenty-three package. And that'd be for parks, uh, public safety and infrastructure. Uh, first would be to define the activities for preparation for the bond package by May. Determine costs and budget proposal by May. In, uh, June, a workshop on the Parks Master Plan that includes projects and cost estimates. Uh, develop budget for the bond package preparation. Identify other city projects, infrastructure and public safety. This will be addressed in your budget workshop in, uh, August. A decision of funding for the bu- uh, bond package preparation would be September. And then in November, issue an RFP for consulting for preparing for the bond. Uh, decision on award that contract in January. Have a report back to you in June with a game plan and ballot language and date set in November twenty-two. Questions, comments here? Are you okay with that?
We actually have the, the meeting in May, Lyle. We, we, um, were able to get the commission approval for May eighteen.
So one is scheduled, then?
Yeah, it's already scheduled instead of June.
Questions here? Lori?
I'm, I'm lost. I can't find the page you are saying.
Uh, Lori, there is an update to the, to the book. So are you looking at the updated section?
This was done, uh, done May, uh, March twenty-fourth.
I did look at the update in the book and it's, that's not what page thirteen is in mine.
I know.
Okay. Uh, what?
Same for me.
What?
The, the same for me, Lyle. It doesn't reconcile with the page you showed.
Would you like me to send it to you all electronically? Cause I have it electronically.
Which one do you have?
Um, I have the one that you just read.
Yeah, me too.
Get it to, um, Lori.
Mayor, you, two of you have this? The way I'm talking about it?
I have the updated version like you do as well.
Eleven, okay, hold on. I had, I have two updates in here. I have a couple of updates. Section eleven, I have, let me see that one. Updated three twenty-four twenty-one?
Yes.
Yes.
And thirteen, we said. Let me go back again. There it is. It's in a different place. Thank you.
Okay.
It was.
You have it now?
Tom, do you have it?
Everybody got it?
My page thirteen says Dania Beach Action Outlines twenty twenty-one.
Tom, I'm gonna send it to your phone from my, um, home. I sent you the package that we are on to your cell phone.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well.
So has everybody got it? Thumbs up if you got it, okay?
Got it now. Can you just give me a minute to reread it? Cause I couldn't follow along that quickly while you were talking. So let me just look at it a minute.
And thumbs up if you're okay with this one, or if you have questions. Any questions or comments?
Fine, for me.
Anything from anyone? Vice Mayor or Mayor, you okay?
Lyle?
Yeah. Yes, I'm fine.
Uh, Lyle?
Yes.
Um, I had an incident today, uh, with a little bit of a traffic problem. I was detained for a couple of hours. Uh, and I don't, I didn't have time to go get my book. I ran, uh, from Miami and I got in a situation with traffic, so. Um, do you want me to take a ten minute drive? I could either go back to take ten minutes to go get it at City Hall, or I can follow along, whichever one you do.
Anna, could you get somebody to, to say, take it over to him?
Um, Marco, do you have a, you have access to your computer?
Yes. No, I just have this one here. So I have right now.
Wait, Monica, Monica, I, I think Monica said.
I can go get it now and take it over to your house.
Okay, if you could, I, I ran, I had a little bit of an accident today and, uh, which is not, no big deal. Nothing happened, but it just detained me for two hours in a traffic jam. And I, I was running behind. I even told Tom I didn't get a chance to sign the papers.
No problem. I'll go over there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. You're the best, man. Thank you so much.
Do you have access to your email, Marco?
I do have access to my email, yes.
Okay, I'm gonna send it over to your email.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How you feeling, Mayor? You okay?
Uh, I don't, I think I'm, I'm on Vicodin, so that's how I'm feeling.
Well, I hope you recover quickly.
Mayor, have you been sick?
I had to, um, I got surgery yesterday and then they, they had to repair my tendon, my, um, my tendon, my nerve and my, and my artery in my hand, so it was worse than they thought.
Oh, that's too bad. Hopefully, you have a speedy recovery, Mayor.
Thank you.
Lyle, Monica's gonna drive from City Hall to the Vice Mayor's home, so if, maybe we could move along with something.
I have, uh, what was sent to me is that the Dania Beach House rules their code of conduct and so.
Oh.
I, is that it?
That's, that's separate.
I just sent it to your email, Marco.
Okay, I'm looking at it. About the, uh, city email, right?
Yes.
It hasn't come to me yet. I just got Christine from, uh, came in two twenty-two, okay. All right, either way, I'm ready. I, I can try to work it out with everything until, um, until everything comes through.
You want me to go ahead, folks?
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry, Lyle, go ahead.
That's okay. I hope you're okay. Any other comments on the, uh, bond strategy?
No, I think it's good.
Lauren, you're okay? Okay, saw other thumbs up. Uh, this next one was, uh, we discussed particularly in light of COVID is the Information Technology Master Plan. This would be put in the budget and the funding for the development of that would come to you, uh, in your budget session. If you approve it, uh, it would be a, a contract in November and a presentation back to you next May. Figuring it would take six months to, uh, complete that and get it to you. Comments on that one? Okay with that?
Yeah. I got it, Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, you okay with that one?
Yes.
Uh, the next one is contract revenue sources. Evaluate existing contracts and a report back to you in November. Comments on that one? Any questions there?
Anna, don't send Monica. I got Mayor sent to me. I can see it on my, on my email.
She already took off.
Okay, all right, no problem.
You're gonna be writing on this in a little, a little bit.
Okay, good.
Any other, any comments on this one? Joyce, you okay? Lori? Lauren's okay. Marco?
I'm good.
Mayor?
I'm good.
The next one is Smart City Initiative, a report, a partner and direction in construction. Uh, this would be a report presentation to you in May. Uh, issue an RFP depending upon your decision and direction. Award contract for Smart City Initiative Development. And that would be, uh, in November and complete construction by June of next year. Comments on that one? That's an issue many of you talked to me about. Uh, and I, and, uh, just to sidelight, I pushed the staff saying, don't, uh, over promise. Uh, if you think it's gonna be in one month, give me another month. Add one in is what I suggested to them. Any questions or comments about the Smart City Initiative?
What exactly is that?
Anna, you wanna explain it?
That's the, um, the infrastructure. That's the, um, the infrastructure and the work for, um, what we discussed in regards to, um, smart technology, meter reading, a Wi-Fi citywide, um, and all those additional benefits for, for our residents.
Okay.
Did that respond, Mayor?
Yes.
Any comments, questions from others? Any thumbs up, you're okay? Long Range Financial Model, particularly in light of COVID and its, uh, impacts both on the economy and, and you locally and revenues. Uh, this would be, uh, having a long-range financial model in plan, so. The idea here was that the model could be adjusted based upon different types of changes in the economy. That model would be presented to you in, uh, February of next year. Uh, it's being worked on now, but it will hopefully be completed by December. Questions here, okay with this one? I see Marco's. Others, okay? Senior Administrative Coordinator Position for Mayor and City Commissioners. We talked about this at our session. This would be to develop a job description and determine the salary level. Uh, develop a budget proposal, have an amendment next month. Advertise and have somebody onboard in, uh, July, uh, to help, uh, all of you. Uh, comments on this one? I see a Marco's thumbs up, others okay with that one? Lauren? Mayor?
I'm fine.
Okay. Rise, this, now we're moving to Management Actions under this goal. These are ones that were put on, uh, Anna's list and, uh, this is the Organization Culture and Change Around Rise. And this would be finalizing a calendar rollout in, in March. Uh, Presentation March and Celebration in September. Anna, you wanna comment on this one?
Yeah, the dates, the date is the twenty-fourth, is nine twenty-four.
Comments there? You okay with that one? We ready to move on? Your Financial Policies Review, and there's four of them. The Procurement Policy, and I see there's an air there. Uh, Procurement Policy, Reserve Policy, Debt Policy and Investment Policy. Uh, the Procurement, May. Reserve, October. Debt, January and April for Investment. Comments there, are you okay with those? Is that a hand or a, uh, Joyce or a thumb? Okay. Lauren, you're okay with this?
Good.
The next one is a Comprehensive Review of Services and Staffing in the City. Uh, Complete the Review of Department Services and Staffing, May. Any recommendations will come to you in the budget next year. And it will be a decision and have any additional staff onboard by January of next year. Comments on that one? You okay there? Moving to the next page. COVID Response Plan. Monitoring the CDC Guidelines. Taking Proactive Measures to Maintain City Employee Safety as Well as Your Residents. Uh, Enforce Regulations for Large Regional Events and Weekly Updating to You. Comments on the COVID Response Plan? Any comments there? Okay to move? Okay. Employee Policy Manual, this will be reflected in the ASME Contract. And that will be to you in September for your approval, hopefully. Comments or questions on that one? The next page.
Twenty-two, or is that September the twenty-second?
I believe it's the twenty-second.
So that's this year, or is that?
Is it this year or next year?
No, eh, the employees that are not on union are ready on this already, and it's official. Eh, the employees that are union, that contract, um, will be in, in, uh, September of twenty-twenty-two.
Okay.
So this is the right date?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any comments there? The next page reflects what staff's currently working on. These are called Management in Progress. And these are the deliverable dates, these are primarily internal things. Uh, you may get questions about them. There's twenty-seven things that have been identified. Uh, the time is when they'll be completed or functional. Questions on these, I know it's a long list, I'll give you a minute to look at those. Again, these are primarily management action items. And thumbs up when you're ready to move. Then Major Projects are on page twenty-five. And Completion Dates there. Any questions there?
I have a question, do we, are we paying, are we paying for the, um, impact windows installation for BSO subs, uh, BSO Fire Station, or does that go through their, their?
It's a grant. Hey, Mayor, that's a grant that we were able to get, just like the grant that we were able to get for, for City Hall Hardening.
Okay.
So I'll, to clarify that, I'll put grant-funded. Good clarification. Any other comments there? That one is fairly straightforward, I'm sure some of the, the next ones, uh, we will have, uh, more discussion on. The next goal that you identified was Investment in Upgrading City Infrastructure and Facilities. Uh, there are four master, we're on page twenty-six. Uh, first is a Stormwater Master Plan, which deals with some of the flooding issues that we talked about in our session. Uh, the award would be in, uh, July. And it would take until, uh, April of twenty-three to complete the development of a Comprehensive Stormwater Management Plan. For the Sanitary Sewer and Water Study. The next step is completing a Hydrological Model Study. And that will be in twenty-two, September. The Road, uh, Master Plan Implementation. That would be coming back to you in September, and that is the annual road projects to implement that master plan. And the Water Treatment Master Plan. Uh, Complete Plant Painting and Cleaning will be done by this next year. So you're implementing two and developing two. Questions and con- uh, on the, uh, Infrastructure Plans?
This is Eve, I don't have any. Hi, this is Eve, I don't have any, uh, questions or comments other than, do you think when we're talking about twenty-twenty-one, um, maybe, I don't know, put the twenty-twenty-one at the end or twenty-twenty-two at the end? Because some of these are actual dates in September, in some of these, and some of these are dates for the next calendar year. And I think it can be confusing.
That's true.
Yeah, there's no day in this at all. These are just month and year.
For example, go back four or five, when we're doing the rise, nine twenty-four is the date. Or twenty-one was the date and it was changed to twenty-four. But we have to know that that's twenty-twenty-one versus twenty-twenty-two or something. I just think it would make it easier to understand these, to know that it's this year versus.
I will then put a clarification, there's no dates in here. It is month and year.
Okay, so the nine twenty-one stays as, as nine twenty-one, I don't want, I don't want you to change it to nine twenty-four.
Right, that's why I asked about.
That was my confusion, when Anna did that, I thought, I thought we were going by date and month, uh, month and, you get me?
I'm glad you brought that up, Eve, because it, it, it struck me now, that I said change the, the Rising in Employee, um, Recognition Program.
Right.
And Appreciation to nine twenty-one. Cause I was thinking of the date, not the year.
No, no, I just left it nine twenty-one, because I don't put specific dates, because I think that's too specific, it's month and year.
Okay, thank you, then never mind.
Thank you, Allah.
Any other comments there? You okay? New Fire Station, uh, Direction and Funding Mechanism. Uh, Meet With Developers is ongoing, Complete Concurrent Reports is ongoing. Identify Fire Station Location by December. Uh, Report on Needs, Locations and Costs, uh, coming to you in February next year. For your direction on the Fire Station, Substation and Fire Station Remodel, including Timing and Funding Mechanism. Questions and comments on new fire station?
Lyle, I just wanna add to that, I don't know if we put an asterisk, um, just to let the commission know that there could be two paths on this. Um, when I was communicating with, uh, the folks in a couple of other cities, in- including, uh, Miami Beach. That when they floated their, their bond, um, they, they put, um, things like fire stations and, and, um, public safety actually, as a question on, on the bond. So this may be an option as well for them, uh, for this to be part of a future bond.
Yeah, that's the final bullet on the act, uh, issues list. It says link to Geo Bond, or potential link to Geo Bond.
Got it.
Does that capture that?
Yes, sir.
Comments from others, you okay? Sidewalk Master Plan. This would be to developing a budget prop- proposal. And then direction from you in the budget, whether to fund a sidewalk master plan. If you say yes, it would, uh, be, uh, hired in January and completed by December of next year. Questions or comments on this one? Any? Going to the next one is Street Lights Master Plan. Uh, the issue an RFP for the installation of a hundred and fifty solar streetlights. Uh, a decision to award in, uh, July. Completing Installation of the Cities by July of twenty-two. And FPL Hardwire Streetlights, two-hundred-and-fifty, done by, uh, Novem- uh, September of twenty-two. Comments there? You okay with that one? Mobility fee, uh, study. Uh, Field Study and Public Outreach is completed. A Final Draft is being reviewed currently. And it will come to you in, uh, May, uh, for decision for adoption. And any direction that comes in that would be incorporated into the budget for twenty-three. Comments? On this one?
Lyle, this is Tom, the city clerk. Um, the mobility study is, uh, scheduled on the April twenty-seventh, Commission Agenda for Adoption, so.
So I moved that up to April then?
Yes, sir.
Alright. Done. So I changed the four, uh, five to a four. So you're ahead of schedule.
Uh, Community Development, yes.
Comments there? Uh, Circulator Service. Uh, Complete Operational Analysis by April. And a Report to You, uh, a Presentation on Circulator in May, and you'd also get a decision on direction there. Comments on that one? You okay with that? Some comments? Thumbs up if you're ready. And then, uh, the Management in Progress, you can see on page thirty-two and on thirty-three. The projects that relate to infrastructure that are currently being worked on. And if you, you look at number twenty, uh, on, uh, page thirty-three, it says, OTH, that means it will be moved to on the horizon for the next twelve months. Otherwise, all the dates are there. The PS means that it's Public Services is the responsible department. Any comments there on any of those? Marco, you okay?
Yes, I'm looking at, I'm just looking at all the numbers, uh, the pro- the major projects, I'm just reviewing them.
Okay, I'll give. Thumbs up when you're ready to move. Lori, you okay?
I have a question, Lyle.
Fire away, Mayor.
Um, on the pier refurbishment project, it's gonna, the design happens in June of twenty-one and the construction doesn't happen until the following, um, February? Why is it so far apart?
Um, Mayor, because the design is, is what triggers the RFP for construction. And per procurement, that has X amount of, of steps, you gotta put the committee together. Then you, the, then the presentation, then the selections and going to commission, so there.
It starts, it starts June twenty-one, it does, it's not completed by then, correct? So does that mean that you're gonna start the design phase in June? And then after that comes the RFP and all those other things after June?
Yes.
Or do I put, uh, uh, between A and B, uh, RFP process and, and a contract?
Yeah, RFP process, selection, contract negotiation, commission approval.
When would commission approval be?
I, I would, I would rather just keep the timeline and just put what the whole process would be, because sometimes we might be a month earlier or a month behind, so.
But the commission is likely to make a decision by December of this year, given the timeframe you said.
That's, that's correct, that's correct.
Does that help, Mayor? So I'll break it out, we'll not just have an A, B, we'll ha- or, we'll have A, B, C. C being the Commission Award Contract and then the construction from February to February, does that help, Mayor?
Well, yeah, I just, yeah, it made sense that the design started instead of it being completed. So now I'm looking at these dates, are, uh, so the dates you put on there is that time that we're gonna start these projects? Or time that the projects are completed?
Completed, so what I understand is the design will be completed by June of this year. Then you issue the RFP. Uh, and then the commission would award that contract by December, a decision to award contract. And then I'll put begin construction in February of next year. Is that accurate, Anna?
Yes, sir.
So that means it's in two months, the design will be completed then? Um.
Pretty much.
Is that, is that?
Yeah, pretty much is in the range of, you know, forty-five to sixty days.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
That's good additions there to clarify.
Yeah.
Lori?
Uh, yeah, I have a couple of questions, um, some of your, your dates don't make sense.
Uh, under time, so for example, number six, Northwest First Street Skate Improvement Project Construction, you have eleven-two.
It should be twenty-one.
Okay, and then if you go down further, number ten, Northwest Southwest First Avenue Water Main Project, six, sixty-six?
Oh, that's a good one. That would be twenty-two.
Okay, thank you. I think those are the only ones I saw that didn't.
If you see any others, let me know.
Yeah.
Those are weird ones.
Okay. Those are the only two I saw that jumped out at me.
You okay otherwise, Lori?
Yeah, I'm still reviewing, but yeah.
If we, I can give you guys more time. Joyce, are you still reviewing too? So thumbs up when you're ready, I won't rush. A lot of these we have talked about in our sessions and this tries to give you an idea, expectation of what's gonna be delivered on. Ready to move? Lori, you have another one?
I have, I, I have a question. Anna, you might be able to answer this. Um, I see the Nyberg, oh, never mind, I see it now. I saw Nyberg's wants it. I didn't see Women's Club, but that's right next to it. Never mind, I'm good.
Okay. Moving on to your hometown in Broward County, a vibrant, sustainable community. Beach restoration, uh, plan, complete beach restoration segment three uh, by March of next year, complete the Dune Restoration by September. And undergrounding of utilities will be done by this November. Any questions here? You okay with those? Marco, you okay?
I was just looking where you were because I I got lost here all of a sudden.
We're on page thirty-four?
Yeah, I'm on thirty-four.
Okay.
Okay, I I I see it. I I, I was on thirty-three and I turned after that. I didn't realize you were going to the next page, okay.
Any other comments?
I do, I do have a comment, a question.
Sure.
The the beach re- uh, beach nourishment, uh, complete, isn't that, it says by three of twenty-two, but we're not doing that. That's that's US government doing that, is that correct?
That's correct. That's the Army Corps of Engineers. And that goes, um, along with the Dune, uh, Restoration. Uh, we have to wait until they complete everything.
Go ahead Karma, or Marco.
I look back at Karma, don't I? Uh, anyhow, uh, I just was, I mean, they, they said that in stone because they don't usually run on time.
Well, when these dates are coming from another entity, I don't know, Lyle, we should leave some sort of asterisk. But if anything changes, um.
Corps of, US Corps of Engineers.
Yeah.
Reason why I ask that is because I'm sure all the commissioners get bombarded with the question is when we get our beach renurished. And for us to give a date of, uh, of that in the in the Dune Restoration and to say that, you know, we're putting our heads out there on, you know, for them to take a swipe at us. I just wanted to kind of, you know, get an idea of that, that's all.
And if you put an asterisk, you can just say, uh, you know. Uh, pending upon whatever, so, because we don't control the other government, so.
I added two things, not only the asterisks, but put the US Corps of Engineers to project.
Yes.
Is is this the project that was supposed to happen like eight years ago?
Yes, ma'am.
Where they're going to dig over there, Port Everglades, and it's supposed to be a steady flow of sand that counts for inertia. Is this still that?
That's still that, and then in addition to that is actually the extension of our of our beach going eastward.
The command, in a, uh, along with that, have you got the information? Are they gonna, what are they gonna do to prevent the sand from being swiped out again? Wasn't there some comment on that as well that, uh, they were able to, they're gonna be doing something to help possibly hold our beach in place?
Yeah, this is a whole part of a project that's that's working from north to to south. Um, and that's all part of this. Um, but what actually affects our beach in addition to the the project that's starting up north um, is also the project that's actually happening on our beach property, which is going to be adding more sand and pushing the beach out. So we can have a a a longer beach, a wider beach, actually.
Well, I guess I understand that, but we've had that done a few times already. Uh, last time it wasn't spread out, but it's been spread out before. And I, uh, asking a question from years ago that they cannot, uh, pump the sand in from outside anymore because there's too many holes out there. Then when the beach gets renourished, uh, and the sand, I guess, is obviously coming, supposedly coming from Port Everglades. Question is, is that if they they put all that sand out there again, is there anything that they are able to do to keep it from, as soon as we get one storm, the beach is gone again? And is there, are they, are they, is there any preventive measures to keep that sand from drawing out?
The the last project that occurred on our beach was back in in, um, April, May of twenty nineteen. I had just been with the city a short period of time, but that project was just to put sand on the existing sand.
Right, got you.
So this is two things going on. This is a global project that's starting up north on the east coast of of, um, of Broward. That's gonna impact our beach in a, in a more positive way. And another project that's actually going to be occurring on our beach to expand our beach outward. So I'm hoping that whatever the fix is in regards to, um, the challenges that we've been facing, that it's something that that is long-lasting and hopefully the fix is what we've been needing.
Hope so, thank you.
No, good points, and I'm capturing your points. Marco over here on the issues to make sure that those are in the mind of staff going forward as well. And that includes retaining the staff, eh, or sand and, uh, the Corps of Engineer dependence, particularly on dates. Any other comments there? You okay? Lori, you okay? Mayor?
Yes, I'm fine.
Panhandling homeless regulations and actions, ordinance update. Uh, review current regulations and enforcement. Problem analysis update, legal constraints, best practices. Getting a report to you in June for your direction. And that would be both attorney and, uh, B S O.
Yes, I, this is Tom. I've already spoken with the police chief twice about this, so we'll have, getting that report ready. Also Commissioner Llewellyn introduced to the Commissioner a homeless initiative to work with two other cities, Hall and Dale Beach and Hollywood, which would probably be added to this as something on the horizon. That that you won't have homeless regulations, you can't regulate homelessness. But there are practices that are underway to try to address the issues. So that's something new, just to.
Lori, what is it called?
We don't have a, a, it's not a program name, it's just something that we've been discussing, um.
What would be a placeholder on it?
Um.
Homeless.
Homeless Task Force.
Okay. Does it have any timeframe of when they're gonna produce anything?
We're trying to set up our very first meeting with all the key players, uh, right now.
Well, maybe kickoff, that would be the best way to put it at this point.
Yeah.
Is that fair?
Yeah, I think once it gets kicked off, we're gonna be able to move, um. Everybody's gonna have a role, so we're gonna, I think we'll be able to move fairly quickly, but.
What, when do you think you're gonna kick it off, given COVID and all that?
Uh, Anna, any idea? We, I know you've talked to some people, I've talked to some people in the last couple of days, but, um, we're trying to get.
Probably either May or June, but I I, you know, I put out our call to, um, W A, the the manager in, um, in Hollywood. And, um, everybody's trying to make sure that that they also balance everything they take on with, um, with budget. So, but we'll have separate people involved in that, so we'll probably be looking May, June, the latest.
You don't wanna T B A?
That is a initiative. Thank you.
I think the mayor said something.
You wanna leave it as T B A for now? It like, you don't wanna, um, leave that item as a T B A to be announced, not and not put up since we don't, we're just starting this.
Whatever you guys decide.
I think, I think we could have it. I honestly think we can have the first meeting scheduled by, uh, sometime in May. It's just April.
June.
Um, yeah, I just, I I think May or June is fine. We start the kickoff and then we go from there.
Yep, and the other actions would be to de- be determined.
Right.
Good addition. Uh, ready to move to the next one?
Yep.
Griffin Road Corridor Beautification and Development. Uh, a number of things were identified, a decision on Griffin Living uh, project, uh, mixed-use development site plan approval. Palms by the Water Site Plan Approval. Uh, landing, uh, Harbor Landing Site Plan Approval. And then Southwest Thirty-Fourth Terrace Drainage Project. The construction on it will be complete in September of twenty-two along with Southwest Fortyth, uh, Avenue Drainage Project. Comments on this one?
Not all of those, uh, uh, developments have been approved yet. A lot of them haven't even come to us yet.
They would be coming to you for your approval, a decision. Other comments or additions on Griffin Road? Ready to move? Joyce, you okay? Lauren? I saw Marco's thumb, so. Chamber of Commerce Enhancement. Request information from the chamber. Uh, this was actually done as another request when I was, uh, went during our meeting, I believe. And that is, what are their accomplishment, budget, financial audit work program for the next year and a performance report? Hopefully this month, get a comment from them and then a presentation on what you have found. And then any direction would be in the budget for next year. I know, Anna, you had some comments on this one earlier in the management session. Do you have any on this one tonight?
Yes, I I, um, I sat with our finance director and we put together a a letter of of deliverables. We have received some things, but some of the key items that we need to be able to present to our elected officials have not been received yet. So, um, we're waiting, um, for two more weeks and then, um, we're gonna move forward and and give an update to, um, our mayor and commission at the May meeting.
So who's the lead on this? Finance?
I'm working, it's, it's finance and I, we're working on it together, Frank and I.
I'll put both of you down at the bottom.
Oh, I got a question in it.
Fire away, Marco.
Anyhow, Anna, uh, the date, date line on that, uh, accountability, you know, where the request was sent out on March twenty-first. Received some response back, um, if we don't receive a complete response or the report by four twenty-one, what is the next step that you or we take as a commission?
Well, and and we may need legal to jump in here because the the chamber doesn't report to us. Um, they they have their own independent board of of directors. So legal has also been helping us as well. Um, and I believe I was discussing this with, was it Commissioner Davis or Commissioner Llewellyn? I'm sorry. I I, or maybe both, at different times when we sat together. Um, you know, our our concern is that we fund, we fund the the chamber at forty-five thousand dollars a year. And I just wanna make sure, just like we have our audit and we follow processes and and procedures and have deliverables, that all the entities that that we found with taxpayer dollars, um, that there's a a transparent, deliverable and and expectations at a certain standard. Um, that that you should expect as well.
That's fine. We'll just cross it when the time comes as a commission, I guess, if if things don't come to our expectations at that time. We'll have a, uh, you know, we'll have a discussion. Thank you.
You are.
Marco, what I understand is if they don't get a satisfactory one by the end of this month, it will still come to you saying, this is what we got. What do you want to do? Is that correct, Anna?
That is correct.
So for us to, so, so for us to go ahead and and be prepared for the budget, they had better have it complete and satisfactory. Or they may not get any money for the next, uh, calendar year, is that correct? The next, uh, year.
I think the decisions have to be made at different levels, you know, um, and in- including, I believe that will, that that individual reports to to, uh, it's like I report to the board of directors and as as does Tom, as does Mike. This individual doesn't report to me, doesn't report to the city commission. They report to to the chamber e- executive board. I don't know how long that board has been in place. I think it's a discussion that you all need to have. Um, I just said the the ball rolling in a letter because like any vendor that we invest in, we need to be able to have a a deliverables.
Would it, would it be out of line for someone on the commission to request, uh, the chamber, uh, president or executive director to let them know what the situation is and if we don't receive that since they are not, um, since they have no one to report to, just enlighten them that how serious we are about getting the report. Would that hurt or help?
Legal would happen like, you know.
I think that's perfectly fine.
Okay, thanks, Tom. I'm done, thank you.
What we could, what we could do is send you an update in regards to what we have received and what we haven't received, so that way you know exactly what the ask is.
Would that help, Marco?
That's, that's fine. I just, um, I just don't know, you know, I mean, the the, this is the first time we've ever really requested, uh, you know, a, um, you know, report from the chamber to, you know, show where the funds go and so on. Uh, and and I think it's, you know, it's a good thing that we're doing that. I just don't think that they're prepared for, I don't believe they're prepared for us to do the request like this, and I think it more catches them off guard. And I think that, uh, you know, as, um, you know, the chamber's been around a long time and the directors I know in the past have worked on it before COVID. I just think that that they need to be aware that, you know, this has come to the commission's intention. And before the budget comes out, if they want us to work with them, they need to be prepared to give us the answer or they may not be able to, you know, receive anything, so. I just want, I just thought it'd be, you know, nice of one of us and I'd be glad to make a call myself to them and just let them know that they need to move on this, uh, report and get it to a satisfactory and and, uh, let finance and the, uh, you know, look it over the report, cause they should do. So I have no problem with making a phone call, I just wanna find out if it's okay.
Others comfortable with that?
Yeah, I I agree with Marco. I mean, Randy has no idea this is coming. This has never been an expectation of her. It should have been an expectation, but it was not, so I think it would be great if if Vice Mayor Salvino could call her, let her know what the expectation is and the consequence of of that. I I don't, I don't think now's the time for really vague language. So I I would say to her, Marco, you know, um, I know you haven't done this before, but this is what we need now. This is why we need it. Um, and unfortunately, if we're unable to receive those items, there's a good chance we're not gonna be able to move forward with funding, um, in this next budget season, however you wanna word it, but.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. I'll talk to, uh, Randy, Shane and Pat Chuckram and both. And I will, I'll let them know what's going on here, so. I'll, 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 I'll take, um, if it's okay with you guys, I will take, uh, charge of that position and make the phone calls.
Good with me.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, and tomorrow morning, give me a call and I'll send you what 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 is pending, that is critical information per my discussion with our finance director.
And the the request was made earlier than March, was it not?
That is correct.
This was, that was a, a follow-up request, so they've had it for a while, have they not?
Yes, they have.
How long, you think?
Several months, at least three months.
Thought it was December or January.
Yeah, last year.
I think you're right.
Yeah.
I think Commissioner Davis said something.
Yeah, because I am a member of the chamber as well, and I I think it would be good for the members who are current and the ones who are prospective so that, um, everybody has a copy or has knowledge of the bylaws of, you know, the current chamber and how things are supposed to work so that, uh, we can make sure that going forward, we're in step with and keeping, you know, with what the bylaws say. so that, uh, we can make sure that going forward, we're in step with and keeping, you know, with what the bylaws say. So that would be helpful for me.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I think it's important if we can get Tom, you know, um, or Eve to, to send this, send the commission kind of like a breakdown in regards to, you know, who's responsible for what in regards to the chamber. Cause we fund the chamber, but those deliverables need to come from whom?
They just have to show where the money's going to and what's being spent. I'll, I'll call her. I, I have a good idea what you need me to do and I'll call you tomorrow, then you can give me the other list and I will either hand deliver it to them if I need to or whatever. Okay, um, I, I got a question for you. One more thing on the Chamber.
Sure.
You, does a Chamber Executive Director or President have to be a Dania Beach resident?
Well, you need the bylaws.
Tom?
I, I would not know that. That's clearly in their bylaws and their charter.
Okay, and where do we get the bylaws and charter from?
From Pat Chuckram.
So we don't, we don't have a copy of that at all, uh, that we have to be able to follow up if we're funding it? We don't have anything in file for that?
I don't have a recollection of seeing that, to tell you the truth.
Maybe we put that on the request as well, a bylaw.
If they, and if they can't find the bylaws, then what happens then?
They have to have the bylaws.
Well, nobody ever has to have anything.
Now, if it's a chamber, they have to have, they have to be built on certain laws. They have to have copies of their laws of, of how they operate, how long the board members when the elections are. Every chamber has to have bylaws.
All right, well, what I'll do is I'll ask for a copy of the bylaws and let them know what's went on here. Uh, this, is that okay? You didn't get, you didn't get the bylaws, right, Anna?
I believe we have the bylaws. So I was just discussing that with Commissioner Davis on Monday.
All right, no problem. I'll, I'll, I'll make the phone calls over the weekend and I'll get back.
I think you got your charge, Marco, right? I think you got your charge.
Yeah, I want, I want everybody to know that next meeting, I'm also going to wear a long-haired wig, just so you know.
If I can, um, I found the letter that we sent from the manager and it was February second.
February? Thank you.
Thank you, Eve.
Any other comments there? Cause I think that date is important for Marco, you to have as well. Going to Beach Redevelopment Preservation Plan. Uh, on page thirty-eight. Uh, send letter of intent to FDOT. Issue RFP for grill in May. Uh, negotiate contract by August. Award contract for grill construction. Complete permitting and design by December. Complete construction by twenty-three. Complete part design by twenty-three.
Those are all on track. I mean, at least the first several.
Thank you, Tom. Questions or comments there?
I, I.
Yes, Mayor.
Upon the entire beach, um, what do we call it? Beach phase or something like that? That we were doing it all at once. So we're going to build the grill before we build the parking garage?
Well, remember, um, what, what I mentioned to you all at the last meeting, uh, that, that twenty thirteen Ocean Park Master Plan called for removal of a hundred and sixty-eight parking spaces. So we would not be removing those parking spaces until we're able to build the garage. But because the garage is on somebody else's land, you know, we want to make sure that we move this grill, um, sooner rather than later. So actually, this complete construction may happen quicker because when we issue the RFP, eh, by the end of next month and we put together our committee and select the, the, the top five or the top seven companies and we, and we bring them to you. Um, some of the higher points might be a design build, which could be a, a much faster process in regards to complete designing construction. So.
Well, there's maybe still have like, um, the concession that we had spoken about? Or is it just for the restaurant portion that we're talking about right now? Cause I remember we said we wanted to maybe do kayaks or um, other concessions and chairs and, and, uh, the umbrellas and things like that. That's all included on, on this part of the, um, beach redevelopment?
What's, what's included here is, um, everything that's moving forward, including the restoration of the restrooms, the drainage project, the underground, the undergrounding of the, of the, of the power lines, the grill, um, the, the, the park, the Tutli Adler Park. Um, we can still move forward with, with concessions on the beach and umbrellas and things like that because we can do that, you know, from, from a container or a portable type. So if we were to, eh, build an additional structure, um, that could take a little longer, but we would have options to still be able to provide these concession services with or without an additional building at, at the time.
Okay.
When can you come back with something on concession services to the commission?
Well, once we get the RFP out of the way, which will be by, by next month, we could actually even put simultaneously an RFP for concession, uh, umbrellas, beach chairs and things like that.
We can go through the Brucei Brothers. I know that they do it in Hollywood. They have like a little shack or a hut or whatever you want to call it. It could be a smaller container. And it's kind of like turnkey. They do all of that. And, um, and it also has their logo on it as well as the city's logo on it.
That is correct, Mayor. As a matter of fact, I've discussed this with, um, with Eric Brown that knows him very well. And Miami Beach also has a great operation and they work out of, out of, you know, very, very efficient, um, container where they're able to keep everything in there that they need, so.
When do you think a commission could make a decision to award contract on concession?
We can do that in this fiscal year, so we can add that to here. Um, we could put the eleven, eleven-twenty-one.
Got it.
Just to be safe.
Does that help, Mayor?
Yes.
So I've added that as a action item on the sheet.
Thank you, love.
Any other comments? You guys ready to move? Uh, the next one is Bright Line Station Update Report in May.
We've already reached out to Mr. Fernandez and, um, we've requested a meeting. So the ball has on, is on his court. We'll call him again next week, but that's the key to meet with him and find out what is the game plan. I, I know that due to COVID, a lot having to do with, um, with Bright Line really stalled to pretty much nothing.
You okay with that one? Going to the next one is Short Term Vacation Rentals. Monitoring, uh, the state legislative actions and update report to you, uh, in, uh, June.
So again, of course, dependent on when the legislative session concludes, which is, uh, within the next several weeks. Nothing has been going on, on that topic, by the way, for the last four weeks, which is good for cities. But once that's concluded, we'll know that we're safe with all the other cities and left alone, which I'm anticipating from what our lobbyists tells us, and the report will be issued in June.
Okay with that one? Ready to move? Marine Industry Workforce Development Pilot Project. Uh, this was one, Lori, that you brought up, I believe, at our last session. Uh, this is developing a resolution, uh, getting it to you, uh, last month, but a report quarterly as the project is, uh, implemented.
Yep. It's, it's already in progress and I'm, I'm actually, as I'm receiving information, I'm actually bringing it to the commission. So it's more, it's good, it'll probably ought to be more frequently than quarterly, but.
Can I leave it quarterly or you want me to change it?
No, just leave it quarterly. And then if I can do something, something happens more frequently than that, then so be it. So.
Everyone okay with that one? Landscape Master Plan on page forty-two. Uh, complete citywide landscape assessment by August. Develop master plan by December. Review that with the green space community or committee and a decision by you on whether to adopt this plan or not in March of next year. Comments on that one? You okay with that? Lauren, is, are you, your hand up? Everyone okay with that? Joyce?
Yeah, I wanted to make a distinction between the Green Space Committee and the Green Advisory Board. Are we not running past, are we, are we not running the pa- plan pass, pass them as well?
Yes, add them both, please.
And the other one, Joyce, is what?
The Green Advisory Board.
All right, I'll add that. And it's called the Green Advisory Board, right?
Correct.
Thank you. That capture it? Any other comments here? Going to the Beam Team Enhancements. Uh, this would be a financial decision. If it's funded, uh, further, the, uh, staff would be, uh, onboard by December, equipment then, and kicking off in, uh, January. You want to comment on this one, Anna?
Yeah, we're, we're super excited about this. We've already made a, a presentation, um, to the city commission. We've already made an assessments, um, assessment of areas where we would really, um, augment our operations eh, with a goal to enhance the, the, the beautification, um, and, and the safety, um, from our beach to our city streets. Um, so we're going to be putting this, um, in the budget for, to be adopted, hopefully with the support of the city commission.
Questions or comments here? You okay? Lori, you okay? Thank you, Marco. Mayor, you all right?
Yes.
Okay. Trash receptacles, phase one. Uh, complete inventory and condition by May and define standard trash receptacles by July. Comments on that one? You okay there?
Is this going to be, um, make, put an our logo on new trash receptacles? Or what does this say?
Mayor, this is pretty much, we have like a mishmash of different garbage cans, all sizes, sha- uh, shapes, different conditions. We're, we're basically going to eliminate trash cans that just don't meet a, a, a standard. The ones that have the peeling, eh, Dania Beach sign, all those are going to go or we're going to be, uh, replacing them with new, um, City of Dania Beach logos. So it's going to be a combination of replacing the logos or painting if it's, if it's a good receptacle, or just getting rid of it altogether and replacing it with a, a brand new receptacle. There are certain receptacles that should have never been ordered, for example, at the beach because of the, of the wear and tear and the sand and the salt and all that. So we're looking at recycled plastic, we're looking at the materials. Um, so we're going to invest, it's going to be long-term. So it's an all.
It will have the logos on them, as the mayor pointed out?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay with that one?
Yes.
Going to the next one is Public Arts Master Plan Update and Direction. Uh, the draft by May and to you in August for a presentation and adoption. Uh, and if it's approved and adopted, then moving forward with a committee. Comments on this one? Anyone? You okay with that?
Sorry, I, I think, this is Eve. I think I have a comment. Isn't Broward County doing this for us?
Anna?
Yes, they're, they're working, they're, um, the, the contractor that's taking the bulk of the responsibility, but it's coming through community development, um, eh, working with Corinne and, and Eleanor.
You just may want to put an asterisk because the timetable is due to Broward County. That's all.
Thank you. Yeah, this is a third, uh, uh, secondary entity, eh, Lyle. So this is, this is Broward County, so thank you.
Any other comments here? Comp Plan Update would be a budget proposal. Uh, if you decide to go ahead, it would be issuing an RFP by March of next year, awarding a contract, uh, and kicking it off, uh, in June and July of next year. Comments on the Comp Plan Update? Any comments there? You okay with that? Thumbs up if you're all right. Uh, telecommunications ordinance update. Uh, review existing ordinance and best practices. And this will be coming to you hopefully in October, uh, for your, uh, potential adoption.
It's all underway.
And I see Tom's name down there. Any comments there?
No, Eve has been working on that today, actually. Put together a meeting with affected staff. So it's underway.
Okay with that one? Going to the next page. I'll give you a minute. These are actions, uh, by management. Uh, the billboard ordinance would require action by you. Uh, and then those are in progress and then the major projects and the completion dates there. Any questions on any of those? Let you look at those. I see Marco's thumb. Okay. Mayor, you okay?
Yes.
And Joyce, do we have you or are you gone?
We're good.
Okay. You disappeared on me. Uh, goal four is opportunities for leisure and cultural experiences. The Parks Master Plan, uh, would be to you, uh, in a workshop in June and then.
Change that, change that to May, Lyle, please. Change that to five of twenty-one.
Oh, so you're ahead of schedule.
Yeah, we are actually.
So then the adoption would be June?
No, leave the adoption, um, the same, just in case there needs to be any type of secondary meaning.
Okay. Comments there, commissioners? Esports Facility and Programming was, uh, one of your priorities. This would be to develop a budget program. Uh, proposal for expanding programming, including esports. And that would be into, uh, your budget for funding. And the implementation would start in December of this year, of this year. Comments on esports? We talked about that when we were together, uh, some length. Does that address your needs there? Comments on esports? Ready to move? I see Lauren's heads up, nodding. Lori, you okay? Whatever it is. Marco moved on me. Mayor. Uh, next one is enhancing your recreation program. Review of existing recreation programs as well as the community's needs and demands for additional programming. We've talked about this in the interviews and when we're together. Uh, a presentation to you. Did it happen last month?
Yes. Yes, sir.
It's done. And so this will be built into your budget, uh, with implementation in January of next year. You okay with that one? Pals Program Pilot. Uh, this one here is putting together a proposal for an additional deputy for a pilot program. Uh, this one here is putting together a proposal for an additional deputy for a pilot program. Uh, this would be a funding decision. If yes, a deputy could be assigned i- in January of next year, developing the program for existing facilities by, uh, September, kicking it off basically to coincide with schools, uh, in twenty-two. And it could also link to the, uh, bond issue. Marco?
Uh, I have a question on the, on the PALS program. I remember a while, uh, years back, we were trying to get the PALS program and, um, they didn't have anybody available at the sheriff's office to help us with that at that time. Have we secured anything before we, uh, developed this proposal? Are they, are they going to be able to have the manpower for that?
Spoken to the chief about this, Vice Mayor. Um, and the chief now has, um, individuals, um, that could, um, be part of this program. And, and when we talk about the, the PALS program, it's really PALS without an S, police athletically. But it, it encompasses everything from athletics to mentoring to after-school program, um, to, to music, to art. Um, those are the ones that, that I've been involved in in the past in, in other municipalities. So it's, it's basically having a police officers that also enjoy, um, spending time with kids at different types of, of activities.
Okay, that's, 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 yeah, I'm aware, that's good. Uh, do we have a, a facility that's going to be available, uh, for them? Like I know in Hollywood, they have a P A L, uh, facility where they meet and the, and the kids, uh, and the sports program and all the interior programs, which include probably a lot of the things we just passed, the esports, uh, facility, the, you know, parks program. And then, uh, and this here, do we, but I would think that they would have to have some kind of a facility to be able to, um, you know, to have a, a gathering where the, they would be able to put their plans together instead of just, uh, talking to each other. Is there anything coming up for that? Can we share the second?
I mean, I, I. Ideally, you would want to have a police athletic league, you know, type of, of wing or, or, or building. Um, but that doesn't mean that you can't get started with a small pilot program, um, using one of our existing facilities at a time where that would be the primary activity of that actual program. For example, whether it's at C W, whether it's at Frost or at PJ Millie, let's say the police athletic league program is twice a week or three times a week from six to seven, you know, that would be the primary program. I mean, in the future, um, when, when I looked at all the facilities, including the substation that we have across the street from C W Thomas, I mean, that substation there, it, it's not a crime deterrent and hasn't brought down crime. That, that substation there could be, uh, uh, you know, uh, reconfigured into a great P A L to go along with our new, eh, park at, at C W. And maybe in the campus where we have our, our fire station, we can have, uh, um, not just a fire station, but we can have a public safety type of campus. Um, we have some land, um, that we could actually move the chamber and the women's club and then create something really special there and centralize our police services. Uh, right now, our police services are scattered all over the place. That's not ideal. And those are just conversations that we're having that we want to bring forward and present to the elected officials. And that could all be tied to short-term programs or long-term visionary, uh, initiatives that could be part of the geo bond.
Marco, during our discussion, uh, he pointed out that, uh, he does have one or two officers that would be ideal for this and are looking forward to it. Uh, and he felt that, and that's why the geo bond there, that could be linked as a geo bond for their facilities. But in the short term, uh, looking at using existing facilities and doing that with a pilot, both he and Anna thought that was a good idea and that's what this is based on. Does that help at all?
Yeah, getting started is the key and I, I, I'm living with all that. I think it, I think that'd be a great asset to our city.
And, and you know, Vice Mayor, uh, we, we've had several meetings, um, and roundtables with local developers and, and the ask being out there as well, um, in, in getting, uh, a, a small room in any of these, um, developments that are, that are coming forward. Um, and that, that has been something that a lot of cities have been able to do. So that's all, uh, uh, another dialogue that we're having as well.
Thank you.
This one had some momentum. We'll see how it comes out as a priority in a few moments. Any other comments here?
I have, I have a question.
Yeah, Mayor.
Oh, when we talk about, when we talk about PALS and the one time when we brought this, and I, and I think the Vice Mayor was, um, still on the commission, we were on a commission together. They said that we would have to fund all the officers for this program. And I see it says, um, an additional deputy. But when this grows, are we going to be responsible for, um, you know, for additional deputies to run the program? Because what hap- you have to have another officer because what happened if one is sick or out or on vacation? So how much money is this going to cost us to actually do this? I wasn't, I wasn't aware that we had, well, I was aware that we had to fund the officers, but I think when I had another conversation, it said that we wouldn't have to. So how many officers will be needed even for a pilot program? Because I don't think one officer is sufficient or is the officer just going to be hanging around? Like, are they going to be coaching the teams?
Well, we wanted to start out with some sort of pilot program that, that just be, begins to build relationships between our local teams and, and police officers. So now, when you look at P A L programs, for example, like the ones that, that I was involved with in the city of, 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 um, South Miami or the city of Miami Beach, um, a lot of the, the big expenditures for, for those programs, once they took off from pilot and were really viable, um, became fully funded or, or eighty or seventy-five percent funded via grants. So what we're trying to see is how, how is this a good fit in our city? And, and what grants are available once we have something in place? Um, so no grants are going to be available if we don't at least, you know, have something that, that we can get started with. But look, at the end of the day, the priorities of the budget and keeping our, our, our taxes down and, and, you know, it, it's up to you what becomes a priority. This is part, Mayor, of the community policing and, um, you know, crime deterrent and relationship building.
So how many officers are we going to have to fund? One or two, according to this?
Well, he, uh, Danny has said that he has already identified it, existing police officers could, that could be part of the program and it would just be scheduling accordingly, right? Um, and then it would be, at this point, just one additional officer.
But that would be all part of that budget proposal, Mayor, that would come to you in the budget workshop.
That would be correct.
Yes. Alright, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Ready to move? Thumbs up. See a couple of you. Uh, C W Park major upgrades. Completing the basketball courts by September and, uh, the playground by September. Comments on C W Thomas Park? Comments there? You okay? And then going to page fifty-four. Any questions about what's in progress or, uh, what major projects are there? Thumbs up when you're ready to move on.
I have a question.
Fire away, Lori.
Um, didn't we talk about swimming coming back at PJ Millie? Manager?
Yes, what are we looking at?
Um, management in progress twenty twenty-one and under, uh, some, some programs. Didn't we talk about swimming coming back or is that not in the summer? At PJ Millie?
We have after-school programming, summer camps, summer programs, senior program enhancement. Pull-up meters and programs. Let me get back, let me get back to you in regards to that.
Cause I know that it's always been very popular at Millie Park and I thought that that was something that was discussed at the last commission meeting or maybe the one before, I guess, I bet.
You know, I, I believe so. It would, it may have just been, you know, um, inadvertently that we left it out. So.
Want me to add it, Anna?
Yeah, add it and I'll, what I'll do is I'll send, um, a quick text to, um, to Eric.
How do you want it worded?
Swimming program at Millie Park, PJ Millie.
Okay. Add it.
That's all.
Are we also have a swimming program there or are we gonna also have swimming programs at C W?
We, we have recreational swimming at both. I mean, swimming is part of the after-school, I mean, I'm sorry, of the summer camp at both PJ Millie and at C W.
So we offer swimming lessons and stuff like that at, at C W?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
I'll add it as well.
Throw it all, all in. I'll get all that full information from the, from Eric.
Any other questions or comments? So I've added, if you can see, those, uh, to that. Any others? Questions, comments? Thumbs up if you're ready to move on. Lauren, you ready? That is completes the review of the projects. Now comes time for prioritization. And in many ways, this is a kickoff to budget as well. I would like in this section to go to pages five and six. Five and six. There are sixteen items on this list. We're going to be dividing them into top and high. The first one is in the top column here, the middle column. Looking at these sixteen items, give me the five most important for you for the next twelve months. And then we'll take those, identify those, and then we'll do a second round identifying the high priorities.
Can you hold? Uh, I, I'm on, I don't have it by page electronically.
Uh, it's at the front of the section.
Which section is that?
Policy Agenda twenty twenty-one.
What section, Lyle?
It's the section we are working in, section eleven.
Section eleven?
Oh, we're in the same section we were in?
Yep.
Wow, can I ask a question on this?
Sure.
What, how do you want, I, I didn't quite understand how you want, we're going to prioritize. All of the, the pages now are starting on page five or?
Just page five and six.
Anyone?
There are sixteen items. Give me the five that are most important for you. Okay, put the check in the top column so that we'll have space to do it in the high next round.
Okay.
I have the same question. Thank you.
So we're making the marks on those two pages in the top column.
I still don't see that section.
Me either.
Who does not see it?
I do, yeah. Um, I, I went straight from the last one when the projects, I have policy calendar, but I, I, right after.
You moved up front. It's in the front of that section at page five.
The same policy agenda.
So the six ones, are we putting those in order?
No. On page five and six, just give me the numbers of the five most important for you. So Lori, do you have yours?
Okay.
You do have your, no, I'm looking at, do you have this page?
I don't have.
Okay. Uh, Lauren, do you have the page? Okay, Joyce, do you?
No.
It's at the front of that section.
Okay.
Did I take a screenshot?
Go to this page here.
Is that the, and I thought?
You go in four pages and the next page is page five and that should be it.
Okay. Gotcha.
I mean.
Five.
Five, alright, I'm done. I got mine.
And it's, uh, on pages five and six. Five and six. Marco, you got yours?
Yes, sir.
Fire off.
Uh, one, one. Uh, two, eight.
You just need to tell me the numbers so you don't, they're not in any order.
Well, if I give you, oh, oh, I see, okay, number, uh, number one, number eight.
Yep.
Uh, number nine, number thirteen, number sixteen.
Got it. Thank you.
Times two.
You had the same ones, Mayor?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
Uh, one, eight, nine, thirteen, sixteen.
Got it.
I have one, two, eight, nine, and thirteen.
Got it.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time narrowing them down.
You're gonna get a second correct, so take your time.
Alright, uh, one, two, eight, nine, and thirteen.
I have a tie between two. Between two and sixteen. Two and sixteen. Give me one.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
I have a two.
Joyce? Marco, two? Marco, what's yours?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, Marco?
As my, if you're asking me between two and sixteen?
Yes.
I want sixteen.
Okay. Your top priorities, so I would suggest in the column that we left blank, just put a T. And one is a top priority, the geo bond. Number eight, uh, new fire station. Number nine, beach restoration. Thirteen, parks master plan. All of those were unanimous, all five of you. And then, uh, the PALS program is number sixteen. Is a top. Look at the remainder and give me the five next highest and put your, uh, checks in the high column. These are tier two, not as important as, uh, the top. So give me the five next most important. Five next most important.
Lyle, I wanted to confirm from our parks director that we will be having swimming. A program and swimming lessons at both a PJ Millie and CW.
I added it. I was gonna scratch it if it wasn't, but I assumed you guys were right, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Got mine, Lyle.
Fire away.
Two, seven. Um, eleven, fourteen, and fifteen.
Got it. Thank you.
I have mine.
Fire away, Mayor.
Two, um, seven. Um, ten, eleven, and fourteen.
Thank you.
Right, we have two, seven. Eleven. Fourteen and fifteen.
Thank you.
I have the same, Lyle, so times two. I have uh, two, seven. Ten, eleven, and fifteen.
Well, you're, this is very clear. Uh, your high priorities are number two. The information technology master plan got five. A number seven, the city infrastructure plan got five. Griffin Road corridor got five.
What number is that?
Number eleven.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, number uh, s- fifteen got five as well. Or four and fourteen. So it's fourteen esports facilities and program is high and recreation program is high. So those are your top and high. The others will be listed, but they will be as moderate. You okay with that? These are clear that the majority of you uh believe those are your priorities. Now go to pages nine, ten, and eleven. So flip back about three pages. And we're on pages nine, ten, and eleven. These were things that were on Anna's list. Out of these, there are twenty on the list. Give me the six, six top priorities for you here. Anna, I'll have this back to you tomorrow morning, so you'll have it.
Thank you, Laura.
And this time I'm looking for six.
I'm ready, Lyle.
Fire away, Mayor.
Six, seven, eight.
Six, seven, eight.
I have ten. Twelve and fifteen. No, no, no. I'm sorry, not fifteen, fourteen, ten, twelve, and fourteen.
Got it. I got my white out right here, so.
Thank you. Sorry.
No problem at all.
I have mine, Lyle.
Fire away, Marco.
Uh, six, seven. Ten, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen.
Got it.
I'm ready.
Fire away, Joyce.
Alright, we have um. Ten, fourteen, fifteen, oh, sorry. Seven, I, I was flipped on the other side. Seven, seventeen, and twenty.
Got it.
Six, seven, eight, ten. Twelve, fourteen. Ready, um, seven. Ten. Twelve. Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Alright, I need a tiebreaker between uh eight and thirteen. Give me one. Eight or thirteen?
Thirteen for me.
Thirteen, thirteen for me.
Thirteen.
I'm missing one.
Lauren?
Who's this, Lauren?
Joyce, did I get yours?
Thirteen.
And Lauren, did I get yours?
Thirteen.
So your hot, top priorities are number six, the sidewalk master plan. Number seven, the streetlights master plan implementation. Number uh. Ten, beach redevelopment and preservation. Uh, number twelve, short term rentals. Uh, number uh, fourteen is landscape master plan. And number fifteen is the beam team enhancement. So it's six, seven.
That's not right.
What?
That's not right. We, we voted on thirteen a minute ago. Nothing was brought up about twelve.
You're right. It is thirteen. Thank you.
Yeah, twelve, yeah, thirteen.
Twelve did not make it.
Correct.
Thirteen did.
Correct, thank you.
I put the mark in the wrong spot. Look at the remainder and give me the six next highest.
Two. Four, nine. Um, twelve, fourteen, and um sixteen.
Fourteen's already a top priority, so you get one more, Mayor.
Thirteen, which one of them didn't make it? Twelve?
Twelve.
Okay, I choose twelve.
Yeah, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen are all top priorities.
Okay, twelve and sixteen for the last two.
Okay.
Okay, let's get this, I think it was twelve, right?
I've got mine, Lyle.
Fire away, Marco.
Four, eight. Uh, twelve, sixteen, seventeen, and twenty.
Got it.
Uh, we need six or seven?
Six.
Okay.
Wow, I'll have to redo mine, because I didn't see the last four.
I knew it. I knew it that everybody, I, Lyle, can you let, can you remind everybody that there's another page with the four more?
Yeah, I said they're on page nine, ten, and eleven. And there's twenty items.
Take, take mine off. I'm redoing my six.
I've got mine ready also. Oh, I, I started mine. Did you get any of mine?
No, I did not.
Okay. Two, four. Twelve. Sixteen, seventeen, twenty.
Got it.
Ready?
Yep.
I got two, four, eight. Twelve. Seventeen and twenty.
Uh, two, four, twelve, sixteen, seventeen, and twenty.
Got it.
And I have.
Yes.
Okay, I have eight. Sixteen. Twelve. Seventeen. Twenty. And one.
The high priorities are, I think I got everybody's right. Number two, the financial uh policies review. Number four, the uh COVID response plan. Number eight, the mobility study. Number twelve, the short term vacation rentals. Number sixteen, the trash receptacles. Number seventeen, public art. And number twenty, CW Thomas Park. And yes, there are seven, but that's the way you split your votes. So you've got six top and seven high. You okay with those? They clearly stood out.
Lyle, I need to make a, a quick announcement, if I may.
Sure.
So I just had a call from the police chief. We've been um surveilling um this one particular individual, an accomplice. Um, that have been tagging the city with, with, with graffiti, the, the Goya tiger. So we have just made the arrest and have uh apprehended these individuals, so hopefully that.
We had already arrested him.
This was a second tiger. We were, we were, we were surveilling two different tigers in the city. This is a second.
They're prison now? They're gone?
Hopefully, ma'am, they're apprehended. So that's the Goya tiger, eh Commissioner.
That's the greatest thing you've told me in months.
I knew, I knew.
That's gonna be cute.
My obsession.
Well, uh, any other comments? Uh, this concludes basically all the strategic planning. I did send, remember last time we handed out a red thing? And it had uh house rules that you all uh said that you would support. I cleaned them up and got them to you. Uh, and that is the, the governance. Good, this group can be very effective by keeping these in mind and keeping focus on what you've identified as the priorities. The priorities here, most of them got five out of five. They really clearly popped and said, these are the top. I will be working with staff to uh put the final documents together for your uh. Uh, approval and also working with them to set up the ongoing monitoring so that you'll get quarterly reports. So A, are we on target on our top and high and moderate? Are we behind? Have we achieved things? So it'll become part of the whole ongoing process. Hopefully, I see you a year from now where we do the update. We don't do the vision and mission. We, it's much more abbreviated, uh where we get you to update, check off the things that have been accomplished. Others have moved, uh and new initiatives. So hopefully this met your needs. I would close by saying, follow your house rules and you'll be fine. And be uh able to really accomplish a lot of great things for the city. So that's where I will conclude uh my work with you this year. I've really enjoyed working with you. I hope that this lays the foundation for you in the future. Uh, comments before we close? Yes, Marco?
I just wanna thank you, Lyle. I had a, uh, this has been, been different for me this time around. I've enjoyed this. It, it opens up our eyes and uh. Gives us an opportunity to uh work together and get these um goals in line with each other. I was really happy tonight to see. A lot of the, like you said, we, we almost agreed on everything. And that's, that's, that's a great, that's a great start uh for us to get these uh projects and things going. So I mean, I'm, I'm really tickled. I've got, I, I, I mean, really no tension, no nothing. I think we work great as a team. So uh, I'm happy. Thank you.
Keeping those rules in mind and you will achieve great things.
Yes. Thank you for it all. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any comments from others?
I wanna echo um what the vice mayor said. I was one person that was kinda apprehensive about this initially. Um, didn't really see what the big deal was and why we had to spend so much time. But I think this is going to um help us in the future, uh realize what our goals are and keep us focused on. What's most important because we all have agreed on these things. So it should cut down on some of the um. Tension that, that happens when we say it's yours instead of mine, but this is, this is something that we can say is all of ours. So. I wanna thank the manager as well because um for bringing this and thank you for the courage.
And I would urge you to put these up in your uh council or commission chambers so you. It becomes a reminder to uh everyone and the staff can use this for your reports and refer back. Comments from others.
I, I, I'll just say thank you to Lyle as well. I really appreciate you doing this and, and showing us that we can work together, so.
Yes, you can.
Yes, we can. I know we can. Um, and uh as long as we follow those house rules, I think we do a pretty good job, so. Um, but anyway, no, I really do appreciate it. It was good uh working experience and it's uh. It's always fun to find out that you all, that we all do seem to have the same goals in mind. Um, it may have different ways of getting there, but we all have the same goals in mind. So that's really what's important, so. Um, but thank you again for your time.
No, they, these clearly stood out and you've got clear develop, de- deliverables and a way of accountability for them too. Any other comments before we close? Joyce?
Um, I just would like to say thank you to Lyle and the manager as well for bringing this forward. I think when we can all come together and work together collaboratively. That brings, you know, more unity to the commission, that brings more unity to the city, and we can all be proud of bringing something for the very first time that the city has never had in place before. And I'm very proud that we were able to work together as a team to get it done. So I wanna thank all of my colleagues as well. And it's a process. Thank you.
I have one more question, Lyle.
Sure.
Uh, Anna, is there any chance that, you know, uh after Lyle's uh gives you the uh summary in a smaller form that we can have that so. You know, with some of these date lines and stuff, so we can keep it handy in case anybody asks us what's going on?
Yes, Lyle, you wanna show them?
Okay.
Remember that coach that has that? You're gonna get one of those laminated, Marco.
Well, all I can tell you is uh, Anna, you got your hands full. Thank you for all your hard work too.
Listen, I, I just thank you and Lyle and, and thank you to the mayor and the vice mayor and all the commissioners. Um, you know, I addressed my, my staff a couple of days ago and, and, and I genuinely from my heart told them. That that was the, the best group of, you know, employees and public servants that I've ever worked with. And, and I will tell you, uh, this is the five best group of people. Do we all have different personalities? Yeah, but you know what? Your commitment and your desire. And when you guys can just put the noise aside and focus, I mean, it, it's, it's amazing. What a great job you guys did. I know the mayor had surgery. I know eh, eh Commissioner Davis is, is away, you know. We've dealt with challenges this year from, from Commissioner Llewellyn to Commissioner Oddman, kids, family members, COVID, the vice mayor. There's been a lot of challenges, but guess what? The commitment from, from this team has been amazing and I'm, I'm super. I'm super excited about all we can accomplish. Thank you.
And Lucy wanted to say hello.
Hey, Lucy.
What is Lucy?
She, she is a French bulldog.
Oh, I see. It blends in with the book ca-
It does.
Any other comments?
My dog wants to say hi too.
Everyone have a good night.
Good night. Good night, everybody. Feel better, man.
Thank you.
I like your dogs. They're great. Thank you. Good luck.
We'll talk, Lyle. Thank you.
Alright, bye.
Bye-bye.